Next on the agenda, we have minutes of which there are none in committee reports.
None.
Correspondents and communications?
Could, uh, in the correspondence, could, uh, Mike comment on the latest developments, um, when it comes to courtesy busing?
Sure.
Over the last month or so, um, there was, uh, negotiations were going on with particular members of the community, including municipal officials, Remley Gottler, the senior citizens group, and we were under belief that, um, the committee was speaking for the non-public school community. We also, Gus Cockavis, our transportation consultant, I, invited all the non-public school administrators to come to two different town halls, workshops, to discuss the issue of courtesy busing, both meetings were lightly intended. We were under the belief that we had come to some arrangement, and the state, in order to eliminate the second question for courtesy busing of $2.5 million, the state was going to advance the district $500,000 and post a $1.1 million of refunds that the district owes the state, and the community had committed, uh, to provide financial support in order to provide district-wide courtesy busing without separate questions. Unfortunately, last week, we got a text message, or an email, from someone who speaks for the school leaders of the non-public schools, telling us that the deal was off, there was, there was gonna be no tiering, and in fact, it was highly likely that the districts who piloted tiering this year were gonna go back to their old schedules. What that means is, the district will now only provide mandated busing. There will be no courtesy busing, and that affects both public and non-public schools. If we hear enough interest, a separate question for courtesy busing could go out, but it would be for $6 million, okay? Right now, to ensure that we do everything that we have within our authority to do, to save money, and to do mandated busing as efficiently as possible, we are going to one, there will only be one drop-off and one pick-up. There will no be, no longer be any multiple dismissals. They were courtesies, they were not mandated by law. We will be using the same buses to service multiple schools and co-angled students from separate schools. Having only certain students from a particular school ride on a bus was a courtesy. That will no longer be provided. And that is where we are as of today.
Uh, can you just, when you say commendable schools, you mean, uh, boys' girls' schools? Is that in that statement?
Yes, co-angled, which if it's feasible and it produces a cost saving, it will be done.
Any other correspondents?
Next, we have recognition of the public. Just wanna remind everybody of the time limitation. First up is Pastor Glenn.
Strangely enough, I don't have anything to say.
Next is Dr. Rush.
Strangely enough, I have not, not to say, but I can't do it within time. But I'd like to, first of all, somebody left something, uh, how?
Mr. Kulkem? I'd like to, first of all, thank the board of education for listening to concerns last couple of weeks regarding the basketball program. After many conversations with you, with the superintendent, I'd like to report that the program started yesterday with about 35 students. Our really faithful superintendent, the resident diligence, and reason out to me, board members who reached out to me, and I was, I thought I needed to call you, but I didn't, because I do trust our superintendent, and in talking to her, we were able to make sure the program started, um, and is doing well. What I'd like to do, uh, my superintendent invited herself, as I spoke to you about yesterday, I planned to go by there tomorrow morning around 10:00. If you or any more members would like to meet, see your kind of students that you guys are supporting regarding this program, that would be delighted. I didn't tell them we were coming, I said, "Sometimes this week, you may get by." So I really wanna thank you for that effort, because it keeps a lot of our kids off the streets, and it's doing a program, it's doing a service that we need, or get to it somehow, okay? The, I had not to speak on the issue of courtesy busing. I'm just gonna remind you that, remember in 1985, when I ran for the Board of Education and was elected, uh, the platform had to do with courtesy busing. And the reason courtesy busing was an issue is not because many thought, they didn't think the kids should walk, but the sidewalks were not in place in Lakewood. So I do ask the board to, when you, when you do what you need to do, uh, kids need to walk on six streets with sidewalks, they can't walk in the streets. And that's all I need to say on that. Thank you.
Annette Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Rush? Larry Simmons?
Yes, this attorney, too.
Norine Gill?
Norine Gill, 192 Coventry Drive, welcoming board members. Um, I was here in the early 70s, and in 85, yes, we, we did have busing. And there was no sidewalk even for the side of the road at County Line Road. Now, here I am, 43 years later, and they're putting in sidewalks on County Line Road. I don't really wanna see children walk, I really don't. Unfortunately, financially, these problems, and it's breaking my heart, because along with Michael Rush, Mary Ellen Noses and I fought a busing issue. We fought for our children, we want, we did not want them walking. But this day said, "Mandate," and that was it. Now, on the other hand, what they did was, they said, in Lakewood, "Only two, uh, specific developments are gonna walk." And we said, "What? You're telling us Gray Tree and Coventry Square, out of the whole town in Lakewood, have been chosen to walk? No, 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 that's discrimination. You're telling me the children at the other end of the town, who lose less than two months, are gonna be bused? And our children are gonna go on County Line Road without sidewalks? Are you crazy?" So yes, we hired a lawyer, and the parents won. You can't take a certain development and say, "You're gonna walk." This day said, "This is mandated." Again, it hurts me, because many children have asthma. Cold weather comes, it's so sad to see them. I also went on split session, I wa, I didn't have a car. I walked myself to school, in the middle of winter, the spring, the cold. It was difficult, and you know, we had to do it. We just didn't complain about it. This day said, "This is it. You want your children in school, where's this, too many children? We have to go on split session." And every day, I had to walk my child to school, and he was very young. So again, I'm sorry I forgot about the courtesy busing, that's mandated, and we have to stick to our budgets, we have to do this. No one wants to see our children walk. The township has a choice, okay? They put in sidewalks. Uh, I think the board really should look into where these sidewalks are going, okay? I've noticed the areas, however, there are other areas where they should go. The other thing is, there's subscription busing, okay? And maybe parents somehow get together, those in lieu of, you know, when their children can't get transportation. If five of those parents put their money together and work something out, they could get a bus maybe from November through, to the end of March either. I mean, there's gotta be some other way, I mean, it's bad, but it's mandated. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Tom Gaddy? Tom Gaddy, 547 Pennington Lane. Uh, Mike, just so I understand, boys and girls together on the same bus? Where it's feasible and will save money. Okay, and co-angled of, of schools, okay? How about distance? Will that be two mile, the distance be two?
It'll be two miles, two elementary, two and a half high school.
When does that take effect?
September.
Thank you. Phil Habde?
I know that everybody put an awful lot of sweat equity into this. This was a coalition of all countries, come together to try and bring about a reasonable solution. Not one that would be mandated, one that would be agreed to, you know? Well, it dealt through. I had a hint of this, uh, because I attended that meeting of the high, the high school principals from the private schools, and their question was over and over again, "If we do this, will that settle the issue?" And the answer was, "Well, for this year." And the question again was, "Well, what about next year?" Next year, we're gonna have to re-enter this whole process again, because we'll have 2,000 to 3,000 additional students. So, I think in trying to solve this year's problem, which I commend everyone for doing, maybe I should've been on the long-term and said, "How are we going to do this next year, the year after, the year after that, because the problem is gonna keep on growing?" Exponential. There are no easy fixes, there is no remedy. Taxpayers don't pay a lot of money, state doesn't pay any money, federal government doesn't pay any money. So it's up to us to work out the terms and conditions by which we will get children safely to school. Now, the school district is doing its part, and they're providing by law. Safety between home and the school lies with the administration. If we get on safe streets, it is up to them to provide a measure of safety, to ensure that those children can't get from home to school in school's own safely. But I think there's a lot more work that has to be done. We can't lay that whole burden on the, uh, the municipal go. We together have to come up with ways to decide how we're gonna do this in the future. Not today, not tomorrow, but next year, the year after, and the year after that, as our population of schoolchildren continues to grow. Until we solve that issue, or we bludgeon the state into giving us more money for more children, which is not likely, we're gonna have this continuous problem every year. You're not gonna be able to solve it. All the groups that you made with are not gonna be able to solve it, because everybody's gonna come to the same conclusion. If we make concession after concession after concession, and that only fixes today, and I'm gonna get to do this again next year, that's not a good deal. So, my simple advice is the long-term solution on how we're gonna run this district. It's not easy, it's very, very difficult. And without the one ingredient that is most necessary, and that's additional funds, I don't know how this is gonna result. So, get ready to take loans, because you're all gonna take them. Get ready to have the complaints to the parents, to say, "You can't give my child to school, we both work." These are the considerations that are absolutely mind-boggling. But I think most of us write to the state. When they reduce or change their formula, if I get 20 additional students in this district, and they keep my, my, uh, allocation to what it was, and another district loses students, and they still get the, the money from the state, what, who's the accountant there? Who is counting the money? Who is making these decisions? That's where you have to concentrate your effort. Get those, if they're, if they cannot make good decisions, get them out of there. And get people in there that are willing to look at these school districts, the true need, the true attendance, the true number of, uh, of students attending schools there, and get them into power. Get these people out. Thank you.
You, Markus?
Good evening. Over the past week and a half, so?
Yes.
Yes, you, Markus, One-Lay Drive, Young Lane. Um, I had a chance to speak with some board members and administration, and I was given some guidance, and I have some more clarity now. Just to recap, uh, we have sent in a company Frontier Education Group, sent in a RFP for Chapter 192, 193 Services, and as of yet, they have accepted it, and there was some criteria that needed to be met, and I had spoken about that. Um, I had received, um, word, and I just wanna confirm this, at this time, uh, that they'll be resubmitting the RFP application. Um, I just, I guess that would be my first question, if that, if that is the case. And after that, I just wanted, based on my experience, I just wanted to either recommend or suggest some recommendations to, you know, when the, when the RFPs are sent out again. So, is there any, can I get a confirmation that they will be sending out the RFPs again? Um, as I heard?
You can resubmit, we will be resubmitting.
Okay, and on that same topic, I had heard they're sending out the professional development as well, the resubmitting that? Title 1 and Title 2A?
Yes.
Yes, okay, but I just wanna point out, if I'm not mistaken, the, there was already non-public school meetings starting to take place today. And in the email I got, at least, it was saying that you'll be able to choose vendors for Title 1. Am I to assume that, that didn't happen yet, that they don't, that they can't choose vendors? Because they have the first sent-out application, that was, is that, is that accurate?
They are starting to choose vendors, so they will be able to change vendors as well.
Oh, they'll still be able to change, okay, fine. And just one more minute, I just, you know, based on the experience I had in RFP, I just wanna, uh, don't wanna make the same mistake as again, so I just wanna have some clarification. Um, again, it's the second time I've done this, I did it last year, and I think I was clear about it from last year. Um, when criteria changes, being that the RFP is a very short time span, sometimes it makes it difficult, even impossible, to provide the information needed, just be, just by the nature of the information that they want. So, I'm just, if they could be, the changes, if they just be reasonable to, and they, if they, if the criteria isn't the same, at least let us have the ability to, a week or two to, you know, submit it with, with a reasonable time, because that's what happened this time, we didn't have enough time to, and it's not something that was needed in the past. Uh, and also, there was, there was a few items in RFP that were never mentioned, I just wanna, you know, I, I don't buy it, and it just never happened. Um, it said that there'll be a, first of all, they'll be telling us who the evaluators are, you also know, you know, obviously, I guess the, the process will be transparent. Um, we were never told about that, and also, it said to be a full report. There was no report, it was just, if you missed, you missed it, it just says, "You did, you did good, you did good," it didn't really give any information. Basically, the score is, is, you know, out of 100, so I would imagine there's, there's some information that we would need to get, it would make sense, we should get that information, you know, to get clarity. Uh, I guess my point is that when you give an RFP, you're caught in the dark. You give it, you don't know who gets it, you don't know who reads it, and all you do is get a, is you get a two-line answer. I would, I would expect, you know, magnitude of the RFP, the amount of preparation that's about, and what, what webinar knows, the tedious preparation about, you know, at a courtesy, to let us know exactly what, you know, I haven't chased down the fine information, but if it just be spelled out, then it will be highly appreciated. Um, and also, just one more thing, just communication-wise, if I, um, people just get back to me in a reasonable manner or something, how would I go, how would I go, um, communicate with people? Phone, email, it's something I had difficulty, um, you know, recently. Um, like, I know, you know, things can be, you know, instant, but 24 hours, maybe, if that, you know?
That's a reasonable request.
Reasonable?
Yes. Who were you trying to get ahold of?
Um, it was a couple of offices that I was, you know, trying to, you know, department. Was that, which department? It was the, the, I think it was the person department.
The what?
Person department.
Person?
I was, so it wasn't a catch, but I don't wanna inform anyone else, but I, I just felt that at least, sometimes I eat information now, and I didn't get it for a little bit, so, just give me a huge shit. And I know you guys are busy, just, just request. All right, thank you so much. You're welcome.
Upper Head, I'm Tally.
Abram, Abram LaTally, 32 Crawford Avenue in Lakewood. Just, uh, appreciate the opportunity for the board to, uh, I just want to mention, I am a historic frontier. Uh, two years ago, we tried, we were not successful because of technicality, and I, I like this, just the opportunity to tell you what we're doing. We feel that it's a very big, we're, we're actually building a void that is, that is in Lakewood at this point. It seems like throughout the years, it was always help, supplemental help for primary to sixth grade. Eventually, as the years went by, middle school was included, and the last few years, also high school was included in Lakewood. The vendors that are actually now, we do a wonderful job, we do a very incredible job, to learn the service that high school, per se, requires of the whole country. This is, this is what we want to accomplish, this is what we want to do. We don't want to compete with anybody else, but we want to provide something that has not been provided in the past. We know that education is very challenging at all levels. The high school level is the last level before they go to, they get out to real growth, and we know how much we are lacking. We wanna fill that void. Number one, the supplemental help. We feel we understand the community in terms of, we need the qualified male teachers for, for the schools, which we have, we have a database, which we have teachers that can actually do the supplemental help. And we have also the professional development to help them actually make curriculum, a proper curriculum with a small amount of time that each one of the schools has. We, we actually want to do it, and we did it this year through a different vendor, but we'd like to do it ourselves, since this is our, this is our specialty. Um, they are, we have, and right now, as we speak, we're nine high schools that want to join us, they want our services, they wanna work with us. We can't do it, because we're still not, we have not been, like, uh, like you, LaFark, as was mentioned, we're a little frustrated with the system and how it works. We appreciate very much the opportunity that we can resubmit, uh, things. Again, we feel that it's a win-win situation. We are giving, we are feeling the void that is, that is there presently. We can, we feel we can make a big difference for the, for the type of, we appreciate it.
Ross Glantz?
I can be Ross Glantz, eight nine Glenland, yeah. Uh, I have a teaching experience that spans several decades. I believe in the pride of peddling, that I believe student educational success equates with, with success for us all. Um, I, I know firsthand that they're excellent for regional services in the public school and in a lot of elementary schools. Culturally, single-gender private schools that are taught by same-gendered teachers, and it just seems over the years, though, the necessary scaffolding was lacking for high school boys in private schools. Um, Frontier Education Group is willing in their professional and personal opinion, they're capable of putting a crucial lead, hundreds if not thousands of Lakewood high school students, uh, pleading for that, all the camps and facilities that the Frontier Education Group has in educational end of the district. I know both Abram LaTally and you, LaFark, personally, in Lakewood, and professionally, these two other schools, you've had over the years. I can attest to their professionalism, their character, their ability to provide the educational services and professional development in many Lakewood schools. So, uh, again, I'm reiterating, there's a desperate need for the supplemental services for boys in many of the schools in Lakewood, but at least for the sake of my own children who are in the system, for the sake of so many other Lakewood children asking, uh, we're gonna please improve our Frontier Education position. Thank you.
Next person, please. Yosef Baskey? Uh, next, please. Alejandro Morales?
Putting me in, Juan. Uh, my name is Alejandro Morales, Lakewood. Um, welcome to the new member, new board. Um, there are crowds, I work my heart in, you know, because a lot of kids this year woke in. I feel very special, especially at the new start. I hopefully, tonight, more people listen to the lately, the main, you know, talk about, so, all the ethic, what can happen in the, in the board. Um, it's very important, it's known for the good, for the school, it's for all of it. But, um, again, I wanted to let you know, everybody, I'll be here, and I want to work together, because I'm very concerned about all, all the things happening to the kids. Um, so, thank you so much.
Mrs. Morales, I wanna, you weren't here last month, but I wanna thank you in front of everyone for the beautiful senior lunch you made for everyone. Mrs. Morales, spend the entire senior high school, uh, class, uh, Lakewood High School. It's very unlikable, thanks for the grammar schools, and she's doing an excellent job by herself, almost single-handedly, and it was truly amazing, Mrs. Morales, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I pray you're here for everybody, but I, I wanted to let you know, uh, when I, when I'm doing something for anybody, I never wait something back, believe me. Um, I have kids, and so many times when I came to school, my heart broke. my heart broke. So many times I cry because I see, I see the kids. I always say, I have a lot of very good kids that took me to school. But, thank you in advance. But I hope we can here find out more things for the, for the better in the future. Thank you.
That concludes the public portion of the meeting. Next on the agenda is the business agenda, superintendent agenda. I have some additions to the agenda that are in your packet, in the back. Under the tab. It will be pages one through seven, and the additions to the body of the agenda. I need a motion. Motion?
Second.
Freeman, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Djokovic? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger has left. Mr. Slacken?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Five yeses. Uh, next is the business agenda. Motion, please.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Slacken?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Next, we have the superintendent agenda. Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Djokovic?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, I believe you have to abstain on number nineteen. Okay, so, uh, and the rest would be? Yes, except for, uh, abstaining on number nineteen. Um, Mrs. Slacken?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Five yeses, motion yeses. Motion, please.
Second.
Motion, please.
Call of favor?
Call of favor?